January 31st, 2025 meeting of the Richmond Sanitary District Board of Commissioners is called to order. Before we get to the first item of business, I'm going to put Jeff Lo Marler on the spot. Congratulations to you and your wife for receiving the Wayne County Area Chamber of Commerce Volunteer of the Year Award to both of you.
Good job.
Congratulations to you. The first item of business is to receive bids for contract laboratory duties. And do we have two here?
Let's do it right here. Chemical bid?
Nope.
Nope. This other one.
Okay. Perfect. Cheers. The first one's from Environmental Service Group in Indianapolis, Indiana. The quote's valid until January 1st, 2026. I believe the total cost is $56,019.50. I don't see any bid bond. It's too big to go through every single page, but...
Yeah. I'm not sure for that, for a service like that, I don't know if they do have a bid bond.
I don't think they do, but I'll...
Okay.
We will look into that.
But they do seem to have a lot of different tests and...
Yes, the cost on these is, it's all the tests we could have to run in a year. If you remember when we do this every year when we put that up, it kind of covers us. So if we have events like, like when we had the fire or different things like this, we may have cases where we run more tests. So it's a, it's a potential test for the year based on regulations.
Got it. The second one's from Element Labs from Fort Wayne, Indiana. The quote's valid until 12/31/25.
Like they do have by unit again?
Yeah. It looks like they have a total line item as well. I'll just state it, but you can validate. And then, yes, they do have all of them broken out individually. Per page, yeah. And then this, yeah, I think that that quote price might be wrong because each sheet has its own separate total cost.
Okay.
Yes, $28.19. Okay.
Okay, we'll validate that through the unit.
And we will thank those who have submitted bids and refer those to management for recommendation at a later meeting. The next item of business is to receive quotes for the purchasing of chemicals from 2025 through 2028.
So it looks like there was two?
This, this, this one, do we break out by specific chemical if one company is lower than another in a specific?
I don't honestly, in the past, we've usually done bids per specific chemical and not conglomerate. So we've been able to do it per chemical. I did not review these before they went out, so I'm not sure.
There's different prices for different products.
Okay.
But the first bid's from JCI Jones Chemicals Incorporated from Beach Grove, Indiana. It's valid until April 1st, 2028. And there's multiple different pages with different bid prices. And I think it would be hard to calculate a total.
Okay.
We'll put bid tabs together.
Yeah, we will put bid tabs together.
Okay. This one would be from BrenTag Mid South Incorporated from Indianapolis, Indiana. Quote's valid until 45 days from submittal. Yep, so there's different amounts based on the different chemicals.
I think also one year, didn't we accept just a one year as opposed to going ahead and agreeing to multiple years because the price has skyrocketed?
Yes. And that still has not come down. The, it looks like what I'm seeing here in a quick scan through, these are for the disinfection processes, which is chlorine and sulfur dioxide. And those both went up approximately 700%
Wow.
increase through COVID. And there was some citing of some force majeure stuff, which there were a handful of other things going on in those processes, but they really have not settled back down. So we have done these one year before we have opted to renew, even on the, on the three years. We send it out every year and pull data to see if this is, how this lays out.
And again, thanks to those who submitted quotes for chemicals. And they will also be referred to management for a recommendation at a later meeting. The next item of business is approval of board minutes from January 14th of 2025.
President Miller?
Yes, Mr. Bakshi.
Motion for approval of board minutes from January 14th, 2025 as presented.
And I will second the motion. There's a motion and a second to approve minutes from the January 14th, 2025 meeting as presented. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item of business is approval of invoices from check date December 13th of 2024, January 17th and 24th of 2025.
President Miller?
Yes, Mr. Bakshi.
Motion of approval of invoices from check dates December 13th, 2024, and January 17th and 24th of 2025. The total amount was $387,016.90. Notables included two from Bloomington Ford. First was in the amount of $49,021.25. Second for $72,127.25. There was also two from Keystone Cooperative in the amounts of $24,530.50 and $25,856.45. There was a, there was one charge from Azteca Systems Holding for $43,500. IDEM Controller's Office for $13,615. Indiana American Water for $11,050. U.S. Geological Survey for $13,250. And two from WUR Solid Waste Management in the amounts of $11,552.11 and $11,246.14.
And I will second the motion. There's a motion and a second to approve invoices from check date December 13th of 2024 and January 17th and 24th of 2025, totaling $387,016.90. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item of business is the director's report.
Yes, Madam President and Board. You have the year-end report for 2024 in front of you. Before I get into that, I had a couple other pieces I wanted to go over. First is the WUR, which you just saw, those two invoices that were there. The WUR is the Wayne Union Recycling, and they have a solid waste district, so a joint county solid waste district. At the end of the year last year, Wayne County and Union County elected to dissolve that entity. There's still a lot of pieces, I think, getting worked through with that, that I, that I don't know all those details. But the, what you see us paying there is we collected at our scale house a $2 tipping fee per ton for the WUR. So that, we added that, that is factored into our revenue, that we will take in that $2 a ton, which is roughly $150,000, $160,000 per year. And we would pay that out quarterly as we do that report to the state. And we would pay them back that $2 per ton received for that quarter. As a WUR is disbanded or dissolved at this point in time, there is no tipping fee starting in 2025. However, we paid these couple runs because we, again, it's quarterly, so we were paying the last three months of last year out this time. But at this point in time going forward, we currently are not expecting to pay those tipping fees. So I'm not probably going to do an official budget reduction, but I at least wanted to make note that in that, there is a line item in the landfills account number that pays out like fees, and there's like $160,000. We don't expect that. The county is, I know, talking about though, still maintaining some of its solid waste district duties that it's done here. So like their, their countywide tire drives and their tox away days, I think they're still planning on that. They have some funds left over, but they've talked about implementing a, they can implement a tipping fee under the county. I mean, WR is off, so they may put that back in. So I don't know when or where they may, so we will likely just leave that in our budget. And we could come back to that at one point if they, if they introduce that, that tipping fee under the county. Beyond that, just wanted a couple other quick notes. One, every year around March, we, we do a new Paris bike cleanup where we go all along the Paris bike, you know, which is the road leading out to the landfill. So there's a lot of things that blow off vehicles that aren't tarped or just come off. So we do a cleanup of that every year. So we'll be looking to put notices out for that. It usually happens in March, somewhat weather dependent there. And then our, where we usually offer our own extended cleaning services in April. So where we will allow free tires to be brought in, we extend landfill hours and things of that nature will be in April. So we'll be gearing up to put notices out for that fairly soon too in collecting dates. Beyond that, unless there are questions on those items or something else, I'll go into the report here, which is a lot of pages, so I'm not going to read each one. I will spare you. I kind of pulled kind of a highlight area there, but by any means, we can, I will answer any questions over any portion of this.
Does, does this also go to council or the council members?
Every year I, I email it to council members, and I always send it to the mayor. And I did do that yesterday. I sent it to the mayor and to all council members as well for their review. And it was, there was a couple, there was a year there or so, last year, I think the year before, where they kind of suspended it for some reasons, I'm not 100% sure. But before that, there was, every department would come to council and give a report one month out of the year. And I would usually, this would be what I would go over in addition to having just sent it to them. That was always what I would go over. So going through the highlights, the 2024 section, we are nearing completion of both the Short Creek and the Hayes Lift Station projects. Basically startup has occurred and they're functioning. There's some communication pieces and getting things back onto our SCADA, which is like that automation computer. So kind of pull data. So there's a few little pieces, but they're basically functioning lift stations at this point in time. We completed the necessary modeling to further design of the high rate treatment facility. That's something that's been talked about a lot. It's basically that last major project of long-term control plan. And we really needed to get the work done out in the collection system on separation so that we could have accurate modeling to know what we would have to be able to, what we'd have sizing of this high rate treatment facility. And we do have that modeling data at this point in time. So we're working through some pieces and should be starting to move forward with that design process. We were awarded nearly $250,000 in grants for the recycling. I've talked a little bit about that. The contract I expect to come in and be signed in April. We've kind of looked through that draft contract. So we were awarded that. We are nearing the final design of Midwest Industrial Park and the Round Barn Interceptor Upgrades Project. We just had the 90% design meeting this past Monday, so we're working through those pieces. We've implemented a new billing app, so we've got this new app called Invoice Cloud. We've internally at this point in time, it's, it's running live, so it's taking credit card payment and these things. But we're kind of working through if there are any bugs or any communication with Cubic. But once we verify that piece, which we'll be doing really soon, there's a lot of services this, this can do for the public. So we'll be pushing those aspects. It, it allows more easy electronic payment. Again, it's through an app service, so it's just a little bit more user friendly. It allows much more pay options, so like Google Pay and these types of things, so those are allowed. Has a lot of education pieces to it. It allows more paperless things. So there's a lot, a lot of stuff that this can do. We've just wanted to make sure all the backend was functioning smoothly before we rolled that out. So we do expect to be rolling that out here real soon. We purchased and brought up to code, or are still bringing up to code, but the building downtown to be used for sanitation billing. Most of that work's completed. I have it here in my highlights that we hope to move in January, but we're looking mid-February. I believe there's, main pieces is the door up front will be changed and it'll be more electronic access. That's kind of really the main piece that we're waiting on. But the walls have been done, finished, painted. The windows are in, the ramp is in. I don't know if the bathroom is completely done, the bringing up to ADA bathroom, it was mostly done when I was there.
Yeah, they're waiting on the finish to put the fixtures in themselves once the flooring is installed.
Yeah, so getting really close on, on that piece there. We began at about halfway through the implementation of the asset management software. That was the Azteca that was in the invoices that you read off, significant invoices. That is that software piece to, to City Works, which we've published. So we've gone through three or four departments now, putting in the backend data that will roll it out. So we've got about half the department still to go, and then they will kind of give us that finished product. And we'll hopefully start using that late this year. We also had a zero violation in all regulated programs for 2024. So that includes MPDS wastewater permit, the industrial pretreatment program, our Title V air for the landfill, the compost at the landfill, the landfill in general, and the underground storage at the landfill. We had a zero violation. As far as wastewater goes, that's the first time in about 20 years that that's occurred. Since the, we purchased the RDT to handle sludge in 2019. So 2019 going forward, we've have a couple really minor one or two violations in a year. But again, this is a product of all that work of separating out the sewers, the upgrade project that occurred there, which couldn't occur until, again, that separation work had occurred. So those upgrades really bared fruit. And there's, not to take any credit from the staff too, heavy rain events, there's still power outage things. There's still things occur that they have to come in and do a lot of work manually to be able to pull that off even with the upgrades. But again, a zero violation year, so big congratulations to them. One other piece I didn't have written in here, we updated our MS4 ordinances, our stormwater ordinances using LTAP. So that occurred through 2024. There, so our goals in 2025, which I kind of touched base a little bit of that with what we finished there, but it's finished implementation of asset management software. We want to get moved into that new billing department or billing building and, you know, get the public transferred over there for all their in-person payments. We want to, again, get rollout for that billing app, that invoice cloud, get that out to the public and let them start using those features here soon and get that education going out. We'd like to close on the Midwest Industrial Park sewer expansion. So I said we're 90% complete through that design phase, so we want to, there's some finishing up of that. There's finance mechanism, but bid ward and begin construction ideally late fall, late 2025. We want to get into the design, the final design of that high rate treatment. There are some questions we're going to be bringing to IDEM that will ultimately, we have a couple paths available to us now, but we have to have a couple discussions now that we have the modeling in, but that'll help us choose that path and start running down for that. We hope to sign that recycling grant and be able to do what that comes with. So there's a couple pieces of equipment we'll be purchasing and replacing in kind, and that will allow us to go ahead and move away from hand sorting. So we will also be working to do public education and outreach as we change those routes up. And hopefully, ideally, we should be able to get to three or four times the tons that we collect now through this process. We want to maintain all regulatory compliance. I'd love to see another whole zero year. That would be great. And then we also were awarded, this just came in, we were awarded a $125,000 grant where we are a collaborator of this grant for the white, for the East Fork Whitewater River watershed. We're collaborating with Irland, IU East, Indiana American Water, and Wayne County Soil and Water District. But it is a project to do heavy analysis on the, the whole watershed of the East Fork of the Whitewater River. A lot of it will focus on cyanobacteria and its origins and some different pieces to that. So there's a lot of sampling we'll be conducting with that through ourselves and through our USGS piece that we have. And those are kind of the highlights I laid out in here. There's a lot, a lot more data over a lot of pieces. But again, to save people a couple hours of me droning on about that, I'll just kind of leave it open for any questions that you may have or any specific things you might want me to discuss.
You mean as far as going through all the other pages of narrative?
Yes. Oh, one other piece, I did have a note on the finances. Again, I talked about this in December report. There is a financial piece at the year end. It's still not a complete finalized year end. A lot of the big items have been done, so those transfers into the improvement funds and things at this point in time have been moved out. The only things I would expect to change at this point are where we're closing POs that didn't get fully spent. So what I would expect is a slight increase to the cash balance to occur. I would expect no more deficits. And with that in mind, if you look through each of the accounts, they were healthy and we landed where we expected to land in all, all four major funds there.
It, yes, it looked, definitely looked like they were all carrying over a
Yeah.
good amount.
Yeah.
I know that some, I assume those were sort of close to what we assumed to would be the carryovers into the 2025 budgets.
Correct. So like the biggest one you would see was in the sewer section in 6201. There was about a $2 million surplus there, but that was expected in a way. Some of that was where projects get pushed or shoved, but you'll notice the budget that we had for 2025 shows a $2 million going backwards. So it's kind of that, you get some rolling pieces where projects move forward and back. The landfill had a surplus as well, but we've talked a little about this. We have money in because IDEM will necessitate when we need to cap some of the older cells. And we have money in that appropriated in case that, because we could expect it at any point in time. So the money that didn't get spent is because they didn't mandate a cap in that, in that portion. Stormwater was just slightly up, the revenue, if you look in there, the revenue came in slightly higher in the stormwater fund. The other major one was the tax fund. And if you look at where the monies were unspent, it was really in the code enforcement section, which as you know, there's a lot of changes. The mayor kind of took over that program. When he came in and made some modifications, and even this year, he pulled a lot of that back into the general fund and not, no longer in our budget. So some of it was in their purchasing items, and that is really where that surplus showed up in that, in that area and came back to that.
Just a couple of the areas that I noticed, let's see, do I have a page number here? Page five of 21, which has, details the, excuse me, some of your activities for 2021, 20 through 24. Like the feet of collection system cleaned being down, the feet, the feet of collection system scanned. Excuse me. Is that attributed because of the work that we've been doing? Is that the amount of that?
Some of that is that. So the scanned piece, 2021 and 22 were up quite a bit. That SL RAT was new equipment around then. But 2020 with COVID, we were behind. We were basically at a zero. So some of that is making up ground in those, in those first couple of years. As far as the other pieces, you'll see some swings all the way around. And a lot of that is dictated, like if you look at pounds of construction debris removed, which is, we talked about this last year. It's not like random things we find in the sewer. It's when we make work, we go do work actually out there. We replace some things, so we replace an inlet, so we've pulled out debris. And you'll see from 200,000, from 300,000 down to a little less than 100,000. So it really swings on projects that are there. Some of that's related to cleaning as well. Again, a lot of that's going to be dictated. We have to do a certain amount of work to cover the sewer every five or seven years. We go through every piece of that. So you get swings on different projects and maybe things get done. And we've even run into cases where, depending on how many feet we get, even in the lining project, I don't really need to go do anything there because it's being done in another, by a contractor at that point. So this is in-house numbers, but we are still on track to do all of our every five to seven years that is there. But again, you do get these big swings, and then some of it's related to projects we've done either through a contractor or even projects that we do internally dictate on some of these items.
And, and as you mentioned, lest anybody see this and think there was only six things that were done last year and six this year projected.
Gotcha.
Further within your report, in each division, there's additional clarification or expansion of within that division, their projects completed. You know, significant number of, of activities in each of the divisions that are detailed as well as the plan for 2025 in each division.
Mm-hmm.
Similar to, to what I was saying was the, the scheduled and unscheduled maintenance down, I don't know, on page 13 of 21, again, a lot of variation. And I, I know that, you know, we've put a lot of, of dollars into getting things up to grade. And I, I think really putting a lot of emphasis to make sure that catching more things before they go really awry.
Correct. And if you look in that, that section particularly, you'll see there's a PM facility operator there. We created those two, we did away with contract cleaning of the facility, and each department cleans their own, their own buildings at this point. And we use those funds to create two PM operators that didn't exist prior to this. And you'll see they completed scheduled 2,735 work orders. It was not being done before. So again, it's a shift in some of where these fall, we did the project. So some of the projects that we did when we upgraded the treatment plant, again, that changes some of these pieces. So there's definitely some moving parts in there when you're comparing. It's not like we have the exact same equipment, the exact same workflow idea. So some of that has moved when you're comparing to it. I'm really glad we had the, the facility operators. They, the PM facility operators, a lot of the wastewater facility up above that is completed by plant maintenance. And they were having to do some of this PM where they could do it. And again, some of this PM, it comes from new equipment as well. But having these people be able to cover that has allowed us to shift towards, on the plant maintenance side, to these bigger type projects. Again, they go through a four-year, the plant maintenance goes through a four-year apprenticeship program, and they, they can be utilized for these heavier lifting that we've been using outside contractors for. So we were able to kind of shift work, PM stuff. So oiling of equipment and exercising valves and things like that went to these PM operators. And they did all kinds of stuff too. They took over like the roof, like basic roof maintenance and gutter maintenance, you know, minor repairs of like fence work or railing, like a lot of this type of stuff. And it allowed the, that heavy lifting on that skilled technician side to, to do more of the heavy lifting, which again reduced their overall numbers, but allowed us to take things off contractors. We were putting on contractors as well. And we're still working through that as we go through asset management. We're tweaking how that looks. I mean, ideally, what we would like to see, when you talk to companies, if you can get to like a 70/30 or 80/20 of proactive to reactive ratio, that's what we're hoping to get through with the, the asset management. So what we'd like to see is the scheduled get to where it is, that 70 or 80% of all the work. And this reactive side on this unscheduled to become that other piece. So, and then there were things that before we just didn't have in any real program. They weren't being captured at all. So asset management and again, creating these PM operators, allowing us to catch your things that were never getting done before all the way around. So, so there is moving pieces. Even though I show comparison to previous years, they're not completely apples to apples because of these moving parts.
I think the last, the last one that I guess just really shocked me was down on page 18. And that was our recycling program is only diverting about 2.5% of the total residential solid waste collected within the district.
Yes.
So, and the other, the other side of that too, you know, talking about a big fluctuation in some of your other numbers between 2020 and 2024. And through those years, there's not really been a lot of change in the recycling numbers in that same page as far as what's being picked up, what's
Correct.
tons, so.
So I would, yeah, looking back, if you look back about 20 years, it's a fairly flat participation piece and value. The, the residential cardboard has tripled in tons with the program that we implemented in 2020. But beyond that, everything else has been fairly flat. And we have about 45% of the public in the sanitary district contains a Ritchie. So again, it's still a pretty small percentage. So ideally, if you look at EPA standards, for the things that we currently allow to be recycled, we should probably be closer to 20%. be recycled, we should probably be closer to 20% diversion is what we would expect, um, and again, we're at two and a half, so we're roughly at a tenth of what we see, so that is, um, again, participation is there, and then even while you have it, um, putting things that you can put in there.
Well, that's what I was going to say, if we have half of the people with a Ritchie, are they just not putting all of their recyclables?
That's what we see, um, is that they don't put all of their recyclables in there. So the goal will be, as we move away from the hand sorting and we are changing these routes, it's unlikely we will ever mandate that you have to have one, but we will be voluntarily taking them to neighborhoods, if you look down Attachment A here is the waste audit we have, and that was done per route, so we definitely can see where areas are doing better or worse, which routes, so we kind of will phase that in, uh, but the goal would be to, to move much closer to that 20%. Uh, it will also allow us to pick up things that can be recycled, but we don't currently do like three through seven plastics. Our current line, the way the sort line works, is it comes up and people hand sort it, but there are these giant bins that we put each category of waste in, and the size of the facility and the size of the bins do not allow us to add three through sevens, we couldn't create more bins, it just, it couldn't be done, and this would allow us, it doesn't matter, we don't need the bins, so we can, as we start adding routes or adding it to people, um, trying to get more cans out there, um, we can also add these three through sevens and some different values, so, um, ideally, we could get up to that, somewhere to 20, 25% diversion of the total solid waste tons that hit the landfill from the sanitary district's trash side. There are other things EPA will put out there, organics and other programs, which are definitely way further down if that, if that comes about. Uh, we've talked other times too, uh, depending on how it goes when we expand these routes, it's possible the sanitary district could offer services, um, and it'd have to be bid out and everything through these, through the other towns and communities in, in Wayne County, but we could possibly be able to collect theirs, we could, without adding necessarily staff or vehicles, if I'm no longer hand sorting, that creates a potential that I could have some downtime in which I could go collect these communities, and we have elaborate, uh, data put together on O and M costs for that, hours that it would cost for that, you know, and how we would have to, to work on that, there's, it's still a couple years away probably before we could realistically be running those, but a lot of the, those communities' trash still ends up in our landfill as well, so if we can cost-effectively divert those wastes and it saves space, and that's really where you, you really offset the costs is by extending the life of the landfill, um, that could be done, but yeah, roughly for the last 20 years, we've had about 2% diversion, where we should have probably been closer to somewhere between 15 and 20% diversion.
Well, and, and I appreciate the, the grants that you all have gone after, um, unfortunately, there are grant, there is money out there that, that we can use to help support that, um, that effort, so it'd be interesting to see. I think that was my, did you have anything of any of this?
Very comprehensive.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thanks to everybody, I know that, um, we as always appreciate all the hard work that, that you all do, um, and that they're summarizing 365 days and, and all of your staff, and 24th, 7th, uh, into, to such a small report, um, may not really be indicative of all the things you do, but it is well appreciated. Any other questions or comments? Did you have anything else?
That is all I have.
Okay, thank you. Uh, that moves us on to the next item of business, and that is the recommendation to approve wastewater residuals permit. Make this one bigger. R dash 3K SS dash 2025, 26, 27, and 28 for 3K Septic Service LLC. Is there a motion?
President Miller?
Yes, Mr. Bakshi.
Uh, motion to approve as presented with the note that it's expiring 1/1/2028?
And I will second the motion. Uh, there's a motion and a second to approve the wastewater residual permit as presented, expiring 1/1 of 2028. Are there any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, motion carries. The next item of business is the recommendation to approve wastewater residuals permit R dash RT dash 2025, 26, 27, and 28 for Rumki Transportation Company, expiring 1/1 of 2028.
President Miller?
Yes, Mr. Bakshi.
Motion to approve as presented?
And I will second the motion. There's a motion and a second to approve a wastewater residuals permit as presented, expiring 1/1 of 2028. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, motion carries. The next item of business is the recommendation to approve addendums to the Bader On-Call Service contracts, and it looks like we have three, um, on-call service contracts currently with them.
Yes, yes, Madam President and Board Member, um, as you see, our on-call service for electrical service, fiber repair, and, uh, repair of our HVAC and plumbing, these are up for renewal, uh, and through addendum, I'm asking the board to approve addendum number one, um, to each of these contracts, that'd be contract number 50 dash 2022 and 50 dash 2022, or 52 dash 2022, and 54 dash 202022 with Bader Mechanical Services in the amount, uh, presented at the tabulation sheets, um, and I can read those if you'd like me to, um, I did, uh, our language with our current contracts allow us to do two extra years, 20, um, 25 and 26, so these, if the addendum is approved, it'll end December 31st, 2026, but it will be in agreement each year with, uh, with the contractor.
So, so basically, we had an original contract to renew, but we just asked them again for their prices
Correct.
for the current year, and if we found them to be unacceptable, we could have put it out for bid again.
Correct.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
President Miller?
Yes, Mr. Bakshi.
Motion for a recommendation to approve amendments to Bader On-Call Service contracts as presented?
And I will second the motion. There's a motion and a second to approve the addendums to Bader On-Call Service contracts as presented. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, motion, uh, carries. The next item of business is the recommendation to enter into an agreement for on-call engineering with Loch Mueller Group.
Yes, Madam President and Board, um, we currently have a vacant position in Engineering Department, and with that, um, have some, some need for, um, engineering capacity to keep us moving in the right direction, so, um, this would be used on a as-needed basis based on permits or that need reviewed or, um, projects that we have, um, that can't be shuffled from a time, timeline standpoint, um, we have worked with and are currently working with Loch Mueller on, uh, a couple of different stormwater-related projects, and so it's, uh, our thought to, um, to continue to use them for at least those types of, um, of things, um, so we request a proposal from them. The work itself would just be done on an hourly basis, uh, depending on, um, what it is and, and which, you know, uh, which of their personnel would, would be utilized, um, the hourly rate would, um, would correlate to that. Funding for this, uh, would be used or paid for, um, from appropriate accounts, um, not sure, um, whether we currently will have all the funds within the budget or whether we will need, uh, additional appropriations, um, ultimately depends on how much we, uh, end up having to, to utilize them, um, obviously, we pay them, it's more than what we pay a, an in-house person, so, uh, it is possible that we would need to, um, appropriate, appropriate additional money, so, um, but it's our recommendation to approve, uh, this contract with Loch Mueller Group, uh, for these on-call services.
Is it likely the position will be filled, or I mean, is it
I hope so, it is out.
It is open, okay.
I don't know how likely it is to be filled.
Okay, so it could be a short-term or a long-term solution here, okay. Any other questions or comments?
So in terms of split, is it a 50/50 split, or will it just be billed to the account?
That's appropriate for the work that they're doing.
Okay.
I will entertain a motion.
President Miller?
Yes, Mr. Bakshi.
Motion for a recommendation to enter into agreement for on-call engineering with Loch Mueller Group as presented?
And I will second the motion. There's a motion and a second, uh, to enter into the agreement for on-call engineering with Loch Mueller Group as presented. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, motion carries. The next item of business is miscellaneous. Is there anything else to be brought before the board today? Um, hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
And I will second the motion, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, uh, we are adjourned, and I will turn the, um, meeting over to President Bakshi for the, um, Stormwater Board.
Thank you. Uh, I'd like to call to order the January 31st, 2025 Richmond Sanitary District's Stormwater Management Board Meeting. The first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes from January 14th, 2025.
And, um, President Bakshi, I would like to make a motion to approve minutes from the January 14th, 2025 meeting as presented.
I will second, um, are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. The next item on the agenda is the approval of invoices from check dates December 13th, 20th, and 31st of 2024, and January 17th and 24th of 2025.
And, uh, President Bakshi, I would like to make a motion to approve invoices from check dates December 13th, 20th, and 31st of 2024, and January 17th and 24th of 2025, uh, the most significant ones being to Loch Mueller Group, Inc., uh, first for $23,324 and the second for $30,700, um, there being a total of $68,579.69 in total.
I will second, uh, are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved, aye, motion approved. Uh, the next item on the agenda is a recommendation to enter into agreement for on-call engineering with Loch Mueller Group.
Uh, yes, so exactly, exactly, uh, same thing as, uh, the other, other board meeting, and again, um, the recommendation would be to, to hire Loch Mueller, um, and, uh, would, uh, would account for, um, paying them through the appropriate account depending on the work.
Are there any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Uh, would like to make a motion to approve, uh, the entering into an agreement for on-call engineering services with Loch Mueller Group as presented.
I will second, um, again, with no questions or comments, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Takes us to miscellaneous, is any miscellaneous items? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I so move.
I second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned, thank you.